The President is to the side of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have Frank and Julie here in person, and we have John Malcolm and Nancy Morlino on Zoom. And we also have Mike Beecher and Bob Jones and Jessica Van Orte and I am Kristin Powers.
Super.
Additions, so Nancy has made a request for the use of some ARPA funds for the zoning office. So I figured Nancy's available after 7:15, so it's 7:08, so we should be perfect timing. So I just added that so that we could discuss that during the zoning administrators' report. There is one item to bring up during, no other major additions. Everything else can just be discussed during the different reports. And so there's two sets of minutes that need approval. There's the December 13 regular meeting minutes. And then I realized at the last meeting, we didn't officially approve the special meeting minutes from the budget meeting for December 6th. So just wanted to get motions to approve both of those.
Oh, last minute, the minutes of last meeting?
Yep.
I didn't see John Malcolm's name in the attendance. Or did I overlook it or?
Oh, you didn't.
Hey, good catch.
Good catch.
I was scanning through it this morning and like, wait a minute, John was here. That was the first meeting he's joined us in quite a.
Yes.
So I was very happy to see that. Didn't want to let that slip by.
John, I'm sorry I missed you. I didn't miss you in real life, missed you in writing. Okay, I will add John.
Other than that, everything else seemed to look good to me. Bob, you're?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes with the one correction.
And I'll second the motion. And that is for both, both minutes, right?
Are you fine with both? Okay. Okay.
John is on Zoom.
What's that?
John is on Zoom.
Yeah, he's Zooming us. Yeah, cool. Very good.
Okay, great.
Okay, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Now we'll go along to the budget meeting?
Uh, we already approved all those.
Okay.
Yep, so we're good to go. So we're up to pre-requested, which we have no one pre-requested this year.
I thought you said we had two sets of minutes.
We approved both in that.
Oh, okay.
That motion.
They did both sets of minutes, okay. Not up to speed.
All right.
All right.
So we have.
Pre-requested is Nancy?
Uh, well, we have no pre-requested and I have no announcements. I don't know if anybody else does.
I don't know, so we're down to Nancy.
So we're up to Nancy, and Nancy just sent a message that said that she is ready to go.
Super.
I'm here.
Great, Nancy. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. So I just had a couple of things. I'll do a quick zoning update. And that is that we received one more permit since our last meeting, which brings 26 years to, 26 permits year to date. Um, I'm in the process of switching stuff or coordinating with Nemrick to have our, whatever files that are in a transferable form, transferred to them because they can help do some of the data upload as part of the purchase price of the zoning Nemrick package. So in most cases, that just required me to go in and assign the correct parcel IDs to each property because there wasn't a uniform reference to properties. Some were done by parcel numbers, some were done by street addresses, some were done by tax. I guess it's tax IDs. So at least we'll have a uniform reference that is used also by Julie and Deb and zoning. Um, we'll all be on the same page, so. And then the other thing that I'm currently working on is updating the zoning permit instructions, a checklist and the application. So I'm hoping to be able to bring those to the board at the next meeting to show you with the revised changes. It puts a little bit more onus back on the property owner to provide relevant information prior to submitting for a permit. And then the final thing on my checklist was a discussion I had had with Jessica a little bit. And that was about using some of the ARPA funds to help us update the files, provide a computer. I think Julie, if I'm not mistaken, that the, the software purchase is actually not, is going to be done outside of ARPA?
So my thoughts were we had, you had mentioned that you needed a new computer, a new desktop versus the laptop to?
Correct.
Okay. So we had, um, we had discussed like several years ago and have maintained the budget line to reflect that initial discussion, having a rotation of new computer purchases. So we haven't purchased a computer in this fiscal year. So we have funds that we could either put towards the Nemrick or to, or a computer. And I know Deb kind of was needing her COC laptop to be updated. So I thought maybe they could just do a swap on that one because I think she was up next. Maybe if they just did a swap on that and then we purchased either the computer or Nemrick, it doesn't really matter. And then that would just leave one of those things that we could cover with ARPA. I think there probably would be enough money somewhere in the budget that we could maybe go over on one and on others, but up to you guys.
And that's the 2022 budget, that's current year budget, right? That we would use those monies?
Yeah. Well, I call it 2023 because it's the year that it ends in, but 22, 23, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because we had talked about using some of the ARPA funds for document digitization. And since the, since buying the Nemrick is kind of rolled in with that, that makes sense.
So we could use.
I'll still, I'll still need monies for the digitizing because that's just a labor intensive thing to go back through some of the other, the scanning of documents.
Right. And I think that for 23, 24, we put a little extra in ZA, didn't we, Julie? Um, because thinking about buying the Nemrick or something. I know that we, we put a little extra in the zoning administrator budget.
I think we, or we did, or we level funded it even though that seemed unnecessary because Nancy had mentioned potentially having extra hours.
Right, yeah.
But that wouldn't help, that wouldn't help until July.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that we can come up with the digitization money somewhere, whether it's the ARPA funds or the, or the zoning administrator funds.
Yeah, I wouldn't hesitate to just get it done.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I think that's a great idea to, you know, buy what we can buy and then use the ARPA funds so that we can get this, these, these two items up to speed. So make that zoning administrator job much cleaner and, and hopefully much more easier for people to find what, what has occurred.
So to make the purchases of this amount, what kind of motions do we need, Julie? Do you know?
I would just move to approve the purchase of the Nemrick zoning module and a new desktop computer to go along with it.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Bob, second it. Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Carrie? Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Planning Commission, you took today the month off.
Yeah, we took the month off.
Good for you guys. Road Foreman, Robert, what's new going on there?
Well, you got, made it through the storm, the guys checked in and, um, and were able to get the roads cleared and they were exhausted. And, um, I think everything went real well.
Okay, good.
That's just all we're gonna.
No, well, no tires. We were looking at tires, tobacco tires or something?
I have not heard anything back from that.
Trucks are out in order? Anybody have any road, road questions? Julie?
I know the, the speed sign in West Pollet fell down in the storm.
Uh-huh.
But Perry told me that they picked it up and it's in the West Pollet garage. And he says it's working because it tells him how fast he's going by dogs by it. So, but the one up here on the other side of Max has also fallen over.
Yeah, I noticed that tonight.
I do think it is working though, because sometimes it catches like just enough of your car to like light up, but it's, so that will need to be picked up.
Yeah, I was disappointed. Usually I get one of these when I come around the corner.
I'm glad they're sturdy and, you know, still work even after they fall over.
Yeah, they're aware that they've fallen down. And I know there's a little joke that's going around that they said, oh, if you go slow enough, Kristin will smile at you when you're coming into town with the speed sign. I was like, I never smile at myself, unfortunately. I'm always told to slow down.
Well, they've told, somebody has told me that it's, I'm the angry face.
I get to be the, you go girl, and you're the like. I was like, gosh, you know, you know what's a problem when the speed signs that I like, you know, helped to set up are yelling at me. Yes, I know they're aware of them.
All right, assessors?
Uh, so I had, there was no official report, but there was an email that I, I thought I had forwarded to you all.
I got an email that was about this building.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I got that one.
Um, okay, good. So I forwarded it to you all again just before the meeting started, just to be sure. But it's Matthew Schoen and Meg Campbell from the Vermont Preservation Trust. And they completed a baseline documentation report for the Pollet Town Hall. So they sent it to my email and to Lisa, and Lisa reviewed it. And there were a couple of edits that she had recommended. It's 82 pages long, so I didn't, I was, I thought, oh, I'll print it out and, you know, give it to you. I did not do that in an effort to.
Thank you.
Save a tree. Um, but there is a certification page that is, needs to be signed by a duly authorized agent from the town of Pollet. So it basically just goes, and for, you know, historic purposes, it describes the town hall and their photographs and talks about, you know, everything that this building houses and is. So if you could all take some time to just scroll through it and look at it. And Mike, I'm assuming that you are the preferred duly authorized agent, so.
Okay.
Anyhow, that came in and seems like something that you might just be able to print and sign and scan back. I think it's like the third page of the document that requires signature, but. That came in and then. There also was an email that came out that was from the Commissioner of Taxes for the education tax rate that Lisa had sent along that I forwarded as well, just for your review. She's going to include it in when she distributes her CLA notification. So no action needed on it, but just for you to look at.
Okay, so I gotta sign that right in the top here. Can we, I'm, I'm not at work all week, so can we print that tonight and I could sign it?
Yep.
Would that work?
Let me, I'll see if I can just print that one page ideally. Let's see. I think I can.
82 pages?
I know it. Must be all the photographs.
I guess.
See, I just selected to print page three, so here's hoping that worked.
I hear something.
Signs. I'm gonna stand close to the printer so I can hit cancel if it starts shooting.
82 pages, yeah.
So I think you just need your name there and then.
Excellent, thank you. Great, thank you.
Cool, I'll send that back.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at this other one from. Commissioner has released the December education tax rate. Did you, do you get that too, Julie, or not? The Commissioner taxes releases the 2024 education tax rate letter?
I get, I get it usually through the VRSU.
Because it says that they're forced to use all the.
Did he mail it to you? Okay.
Projected surplus of 63 million and they're, they're forced to use it all in the next year. It looks like it's going to be chaos.
Well, so they had, they had a surplus in the general fund, the general ed fund in the state. And the governor wanted it all to be used because, um, the projected increases was like eight percent or something.
Uh-huh.
And so this was, I think when we, well, you'll see in my, um, note, but we had predicted like a small decrease based on what we had for last year's CLA. But the CLAs this year have gone down, so it's actually probably not going to be a decrease in the education tax rate in our town. And I would assume most towns in Vermont are going to be in a similar situation because everyone's going through the same thing, real estate prices being what they are.
Yeah, that's basically what the letter said. It said that all the towns are going to be in pretty much the same boat.
Okay, so as long as you know and you can deal with that, and I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, but not, it's not going to be fun for anyone.
So we keep rolling right along then. Town Clerk's memo, anything from Deb tonight?
Nothing from Deb.
Okay, so you're on Deb, Julie?
Uh, two warrants this week. Payroll for this period was $9,647.10. Account's payroll was $27,454.65. The general fund monies was $13,315. Highway $17,205.35. Waste water $6,586.25. Um, investment count was successfully opened through Berkshire and the donated securities have been received and are being sold as is the standard practice. We didn't have a final like number on what the value was with, when selling the securities. But Karen Hustin, who is where, who I'm working with at Berkshire, has reached out and would like to set up a meeting to decide how we want to structure the investments from those securities and any other funds that we want to invest. And so her initial letter to us when talking about potentially working with us was recommending Treasury bills. And their, the options were like as short as two months to as much as two years for investing. Obviously, you get a better return the longer that you have your money in these T-bills. So I didn't know if someone wanted to attend the meeting or if we wanted to make some decisions tonight about, we can certainly make a decision about those securities that are earmarked for Garage because that, I can't imagine would be done within two years. So we could tie that money up for that length of time. Um, but then I didn't know how you felt about some of our other funds.
Well, last time we spoke about this, weren't there, weren't there certain monies that could be tied up for at least a short period of time?
Yeah, well, we were talking about taking some of the ARPA funds and tying that up, but I don't know how long. We had $145,000 in ARPA that we could work with. And we had talked about maybe taking 100 of it. We have to spend that by 2026?
Yeah, we have to obligate it by the end of 2024 and spend it by 2026.
Okay.
And I know that we wanted to earmark a good chunk of it for the wastewater. And that, I think that when we spoke to John about the wastewater, we would be potentially applying for grants that would be due at the end of 2023. So whatever we wanted to use for wastewater, we could tie up through the entire year 2023.
The calendar year.
Yeah, the calendar year of 2023. I mean, probably a little longer because I, I'm assuming that if the deadline for the grant was the end of December 2023, we wouldn't be actually spending the money right away. But I don't know exactly what that timeline would be.
Okay, so it seems like that 100,000 we could tie up for a year. The value of the securities, we could tie up for two years?
Two years. Now, there was, there was money left over from the dump closure too, right, did we?
Yes.
That could be a long-term job too, probably.
There's about 50,000 in the landfill.
Okay, so that could definitely be a long-term.
Are you thinking two years?
Two years, sure.
Okay. Um, we have the capital maintenance fund and the equipment fund.
The equipment fund, we'd like, we usually use that to set up the truck.
Mm-hmm.
So that could be, potentially it should be within a year if, if trucks are available, right?
Would we like to tie that up for six months to just try to earn a little extra on it? Or do we want?
Probably six months. I probably wouldn't go over six months.
We also, we have, um, we have the reappraisal money, which we have about 50,000 of that right now.
Well, that we won't need until we can get, what was the year that they thought we would get it reappraised?
2026, I think was what we thought.
So that could be, that could be a two-year, two-year deal.
And then the other, the only other one that I was considering some level of investment was the capital maintenance fund, which currently is 112,000.
I don't know that we could tie all of that up because, I mean, I would.
What, what's that used for exactly? The?
Well, one of the, one of the biggest things it's used for like is if we have a catastrophic event in one of the buildings. So I mean, if we, if we lose a furnace or something like that, you know, you can, you're gonna blow 10,000 just like that.
Yeah, but how much is it?
112,000.
And it's, in the past, we've ended up using a lot of it for painting, which we probably need to start sniffing around again and having somebody look it over and see what, what buildings and.
Maybe we could put part of it in a short term.
I would think half of it probably could go at least in ha, in, in a year. I would, I would like to think that we would be able to get by with 50,000 in one year.
Okay. So what I've written down from our discussion then is the, not all of ARPA, but 100,000 of it in a one year. Um, the securities, the value of the securities in a two-year. Um, T-bill, the landfill in two-year, the reappraisal in two-year, the equipment fund in a six-month, and half of the capital maintenance fund in a one-year investment.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can probably get by with that.
Okay. And would anyone like to be, to participate in a meeting with Karen? I reached out to her and I told her that next Tuesday is like wide open for me. And for the most part, it was wide open for her as well. And she said she could meet here or in Manchester or virtually if anyone wants to.
I might be able to make that meeting next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm your liaison from the select board, so it makes sense.
That would be great if you could.
I can, yeah, I can.
Okay, I will start CC you on those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Frank?
I thought it was decided a few years ago that there was going to be an attempt to paint one side of the buildings each year in, under rotation so that leveled out any of the possible painting.
That's, that's what we had been working on. We had been working on a system and, and they said, all right, well, you're pretty good for now. But then, then there's sides that take more beating, the southern exposure takes more beating. So I think we gotta get some painting contractors back again to, to review that in the, the spring, I would think.
That's how my dad painted our house when I was a kid, one side a year. By the time you got all the way around, you're starting to need to do it again.
No, it was, um, brought to my attention that because of the, the contribution that we've received for the town garage, are we set up? Do we have an account? Do we have a way for anyone else to do, uh, similar or do the same thing? To be able to donate directly to an account?
Yeah, so I don't, so our accounting software is set up to be able to do fund accounting. So we don't have to have different like bank accounts. We needed a specific type of bank account in this particular situation because it was securities being donated, not liquid assets. And, but I think if we are going to be continuing to work with this division of Berkshire, then that account is still going to exist so that we could receive securities from other people in the future. And also certainly if people want to donate to that specific project, then I can just track that money in our fund accounting system and we can continue receiving donations.
Perfect. Okay, so do we have a motion for the, the two warrants?
I'll, I'll make that motion. Um, yeah, war, I'll make the motion. Oh, I'll make that motion. Um, yeah, war, I'll make the motion to approve warrant two three zero three five and two three zero three six.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie? Any more questions or comments for Julie? Okay. Thank you Julie. Anything from Bob Marino? I know that there's been, there was a lot of emails going out around, they opened the emergency shelter, like et cetera and stuff.
Yeah, I didn't get those personally, but um I did see, I think Bob did a great job from what I did see of managing, managing communication through the storm and
Yeah.
I think that my understanding was that had the power not been on, or I don't, did the shelter end up being opened up at the school?
The last email he said.
Seems like it was borderline.
He did not need to, I think was what his last email said.
Yeah, but I think Bob did a great job of keeping on top of everything and plans were all in place to make sure we had places for people to go.
He called me several times and we talked things out. We had a plan.
Okay, we did not plan on opening the warming shelter tomorrow. So. I got a little bit of it Friday, but when the power went out, my telephone line went out, so I had no, no service. AT&T was out, so.
Every, same here, everything was.
No power, so everything was gone.
Yeah, which is such a, I don't know, I mean, this is an off topic, or not off topic, but just a comment, but that is such an interesting facet of being here. You know, how when you lose power, it's like, I know when I was growing up and I'm not old by any means, but you know, the landline would always still work if you had a landline that plugged in. But now with all the fiber optic, it's like you've got two hours and then your battery's gone. And then, I mean, for us, it's, you know, we have no power, we have no phone service, we have no cell phone service, we have no data. And we're just completely.
And we have certainly had complaints from people in our town
Yeah.
about how they don't have cell service in an emergency.
Yeah.
And that is a big problem. I, I read an article in the newspaper a little while ago about how people don't get emergency alerts on their phone. Like in Tennessee or somewhere, they had a situation with a tornado and it came through, but they don't have cell service there. When the pow, and when the power's knocked out, no one got the notification.
That's right.
We have the same problem. I do, I did hear that um some, there is a system to use satellites for emergency cell service that is in trials right now. So hopefully that, cause we can get GPS even when we don't have cell service. So hopefully that'll be something we get in the future, cause I can't see them putting up a lot of cell towers for us.
So during the course of the day on Friday, and then we didn't end up even getting AT&T back um sa, uh cell phone service in our area that was good enough till like Saturday afternoon,
Mm-hmm.
after lunch, but some of the time I could get SOS calling only.
Okay. That's what I had.
So that was interesting.
Yeah, I didn't try it out, but I thought it was kind of interesting to know that if something was really dire, I mean, you could always get a whirl. We said we're gonna get walkie-talkies.
Oh.
Maybe other people will get them too. So anyway.
So you guys talked it over and you had, had a good plan in mind. Perfect.
Yeah.
Anything health officer wise?
Not at this meeting.
Nothing, that's all first. Wastewater treatment, Jill sent me a text this morning. Okay. A one was on site Wednesday to make the permanent pipe repair on the fourth main section in the air release manhole. We also had them pull pump at number one at Spruce Gum. It was full of wiped cigarette butts. So they didn't bring a pump truck to clean it out. These issue items and had hoped that the pump would, and as had hoped. They didn't bring a truck to pump it out as they had hoped and the pump clogged right after, after they put it back in. So Ari is gonna send some pictures of the pump runtime log sheet in our media so that she can argue paying the second task that day. And on that note, we may, they, Jill, may mobilize their vector truck to come down and clean that station when the weather warms up next week's and hope upon getting pump one back up, cleaned up and running for the long term. So that's where, that's where we're at with that.
Sounds like when I send tax bills, I should send another like flyer like we did. Nasty gram, is that what we call them? Like that.
Oh, what a guy. Um, so yeah, I don't know. At, at work, we, we fight with that all the time and we got reversing switches hooked up so we can spin the pumps backwards to unclog them. I don't know. I don't know if that's anything that we could do there or not, so if she was noticing an issue, she could just reverse them. Sometimes, sometimes you can spin the clog out, put the design of the pump. I'll have to talk to her about that at some point. Do you have anything from, oh, Meadowwee uh facilities reports? The facilities are all, as far as we know, all fine?
Yes.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay. And Meadowwee School Board?
Um, at our regular meeting on twelve, twelve twenty-two, the Meadowwee School Board reviewed the first draft of FY twenty-four budget. This budget is a four point four percent increase over the current year. However, the projected tax rate is expected to be a five point two cent decline due to the property yield announced by the state. CLA's common level of appraisal figures set by the state may change the rates. We have since found those out and it's true. Um, we should have a more accurate picture in January when we actually vote on the budget. Uh, budget increases are mostly due to increased staffing needs, wages and benefits as well as expected increases in heating and fuel for transportation. Um, continued planning for a community engagement event on March twenty-ninth, seven PM at the Meadowwee School. Um, our next regular meeting is scheduled for January ninth at six-thirty Meadowwee School and we will approve the FY twenty-four budget, the town meeting day warning and our tuition rate. Please stop by to participate in an open meeting. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Excellent, thank you. Older unfinished business. How did you make it out with the, with the story for the town report book?
Oh, I, it's good. I've been working on it. I've been going through the um, I've been going through minutes in my notes and stuff and I've been working on my draft and so I should have that all to you, that, that to you later this week.
I was thinking, it just occurred to me that the sidewalk deal is probably one of
Yeah.
the bigger.
Yep.
Bigger events.
Absolutely. Yep, some different grant funding and um, you know, just talking about we've been making, we've been doing some facilities improvements and I've just been kinda going through and looking through the minutes and like thinking about any sort of notable stuff. So I've been working on it and I'll send a draft out.
Super.
So, but yeah, but I think that the sidewalk grant has been huge and just I'm making sure to sort of touch on the involvement with the RRPC and how we had a lot of good community engagement with that and I think that's a good one, definitely.
The West Pollet thing, cause there's events coming up for that too.
Yeah.
Oh, with the West Pollet, the village? That might go in the planning commission report.
Uh, yeah, I hadn't started to um, I hadn't included that, but I certainly can. So.
There are four events, two in January and two in February, a potluck at the, at the firehouse. Everybody should maybe show up at it for the planning, West Ball planning thing.
Julie said something about how Pollet is the number one rated TV show and.
We continue to top the charts.
I'm not, I don't know.
Oh, wow.
I'll be avail, I'll be available to sign autographs.
Older unfinished, any, what do we got cooking right now? Nothing's too crazy. Any new business?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
What we talked about is not gonna go on tonight?
No.
Okay.
Hmm, when are we expecting our next update from our town lawyer?
From our what?
Our town lawyer, Merrill. When are we, that's gonna get an update from her.
Yeah.
Cause I know there were some deadlines on some stuff in December.
After that, yeah.
I haven't heard anything from her.
Okay. Well, when we hear from here, we hear from her.
We should've, yeah, we should've known where, where we've landed on some of this stuff that we presented.
He had, he had X amount of time to make his case and, and we had to just file something and, and then. Typical, we wait on the.
Yep.
On the legal system, so.
So our next meeting?
So.
Okay, so our next meeting is um January tenth. Deb has asked for the reports by the ninth. So I will ask her if it would be okay if you could do a final approval, if, if you wanna, I could just email them out to all of you before then.
And we can send you back any edits.
Any edits or changes or anything, I'm sure, I mean, if I, does she, I think in the, in past years, if, there's been a little flexibility, so if I can make sure, that sure with her. But I'll make sure to give you all plenty of time to be able to review it before the next meeting. So if you have any feedback there. Um, and then I think also too, so there was an email that was sent out about expiring positions. So if you have a petition, petitions to get in, um, just make sure to, if that's something that you wanna do again, just gathering signatures.
Yeah, those are due.
Partway through January.
Yes, so those are due coming up. Um, so just starting to think about that. March is around the corner.
Okay. Public comment? Frank?
Uh, two things. Uh, it was on Friday after the wind, uh, I was traveling around up north. Burlington Airport had a seventy mile an hour gust. It was the second highest gust since nineteen fifty-four they ever recorded at the airport. They had damage up north, cause I went all the way up around the Gens and around on Friday cause it was warm weather, it was icy. It was windy. More damage up there, more detours off of main arteries and stuff than down here. And um, so, and they had, they stopped people in Vermont without power. And so I was brought up the backup generator for the building here, cause if you do, everything's electronic, you have to make payroll, you gotta do all these things. So we, there should be some thought going forward on, on that payroll thing. Oh, and another footnote is that I bumped into a bunch of people in other towns that are similar to you, like Starboard, uh, on this appraisal thing, tax reappraisal for across the state. Everybody's looking at the same thing and everybody's looking at the same time for it. And they, and I got two sources that told me that there's fewer people who can do the appraising at this point in time. I don't know if you got that or not, but, but uh, so this may be longer term based on availability of anybody that's able to do the appraisals. Do it all. That's all my comment is. Thank you.
Did you get your upstairs all cleaned up?
My what?
Upstairs, you're done up there?
Yeah, I got, I was out on time, Julie.
Okay, good.
I could go back up some other time, cause I had a new thing and I was pulling everything apart again and putting it back together again. But I talked to David at the firehouse and they may let me go down there for a few days.
Alright.
Which would be better for me for this right now before I don't have to wait ten minutes for the elevator.
Looks great up there. Why not unlock it?
It's a great space. The ceiling, the ceiling there, the white spots, there's a person who does,
They're just gonna have to keep.
I mentioned this usually, there's a person who does uh murals and stuff. There's, you, you've been up to Price Shop and parking lot and run with it, seen the building with a kid and all this stuff. His, his name's Lopey. She does a lot of that stuff.
Okay.
And so she would know who could do something along those lines and if, and it might be an idea to, to find out roughly what the cost would be and who, if anybody was able to.
I think that's about what, I think that's about what the appraisers thought it was gonna be.
And I got a minute.
Okay. I don't know why you were driving around in the wind, Frank. It's like seventy mile an hour winds. I'm gonna drive all over the state.
My car was going, almost going off the road.
Yeah, why do you do that?
Little adrenaline.
Mm-hmm.
Testosterone, I don't know. If I ever did that left.
Burning the gas he saved out of from his lawnmower.
There you go.
Anything else?
No, I think.
I think that's it.
That's all.
Alright, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.